Alright, so our first chapter is gonna be chapter six, the flow of food preparation. So today we're gonna go over um what are ways to prevent cross contamination and time temperature abuse? What are the correct ways to thaw food? What are the minimum internal temperatures for cooking food safely? And what are the correct ways to cool and reheat foods to the correct temperatures and in the correct amount of time? So. When preparing food, um cross contamination and time temperature abuse are the two main focuses that you wanna try to cut. The two main things that you kinda wanna try to avoid, so you can do that by making good food preparation choices. Um by making sure or workst- workstations, cutting boards and equipment are clean and sanitized. Um make sure you only remove as much food from a cooler as you need at one time. Um returning your pet food to the cooler or proper storage after you're finished um using it or cooking it. Um and then. When using additives, only use additives approved by your local regulatory authority. Um not using more than allowed by law and not using additives to alter their appearance of food. So one of the examples given in the book was um using cooking sprays to um enhance like the shine of food. You don't wanna do that. Um and then there are a few other examples in the book as well. Um you don't wanna sell product, any produce that was treated with sulfites. Um before it was received to the operation. And then you don't wanna um add sulfites to produce that will be eaten raw yet either. Um food must be offered to customers in a way that does not mislead or misinform them. Um so we just did talk about this um adding food additives or color additives. Um colored over wraps or different lighting to make the food look different. And then food must be presented as it was described. So if you are offering um a certain menu item, it has to be that menu item and not another one. The book is example um. If you are offering fried perch, you can't use a substituted fish for that perch. You just can't sell that item. So some corrective actions um. If you don't follow proper preparation practices um. And the food becomes unsafe, you want to um throw it out. If it was handled by staff who've been restricted or excluded from the food operation. Um if the food has hmm is known to be contaminated by hands or bodily fluids. Um or if it has to see the time temperature requirements. So if it is um abused by those time temperature requirements, you are able to restore it to a safe condition. So. Hot food can be reheated um to return food to a safe food condition. So this will kill any pathogens or bacteria that has grown in the food um and turn it, take it back to that um. Correct temperature that it's supposed to be at. So when thawing food, you wanna thaw food by the correct measures. Um so you don't wanna thaw any food at room temperature. I know that's something we do a lot um in our homes sometimes. But you really don't wanna do that in a commercial kitchen or a restaurant business because it's just really not safe. Um when the food reaches about seventy degrees, that's when it gets really um.
Dangerous.
That's that's the danger zone, right? So that's when it's more likely to um be in that time temperature abuse area. And it's just not gonna be good anymore um for a certain amount of time after you leave it out for that long. So the ways to thaw food are to refrigerate it um in a cooler, keeping its temperature at forty-one degrees or lower. Submerging it under running water at seventy degrees or lower. And the flow of water must be strong enough to wash loose food bits into the drain as it's coming off of the frozen food. So you wanna use a. Clean and sanitize food preparation sink for this. You don't wanna use a hand washing sink. I know we mentioned that in the last chapters. Um so that's one of the things. And then not letting the temperature of the food go above forty-one degrees Fahrenheit for longer than four hours. So when it comes to cold food or thawing food, forty-one degrees is. The controlled temperature that you wanna have it at and anything above that, you don't wanna have it at that for. Over six hours. Microwaving, um thawing food in a microwave oven only if it will be cooked immediately after thawing. And then cooking, you can also cook frozen food as part of the thawing process. Um so putting frozen burgers on a grill is an example. You can do that to thaw the food and then cook it. Um so. Thawing fish that has been in reduced oxygen packaging um should be frozen until ready for use. So you wanna thaw it under refrigeration or before or immediately after. Thawing it under running water, you wanna remove it from the packaging. You don't wanna thaw it in that packaging. So when you're prepping specific food, um you wanna make sure that there's some hair taken. So there's not any cross contamination, so not touching fruits and vegetables to surfaces that have been touched with um fish. Uh raw meat, raw poultry, washing your produce thoroughly under running water. So the water wants, you want the water to be a little bit warmer than the produce. Um and you wanna make sure that you're separating the leaves from any greens. Um so you're able to get in between the leaves and in the folds of the vegetable. And then you can also use some certain chemicals to wash the fruits and vegetables, but they have to be approved by a regulatory authority. So when you're soaking it or storing um vegetables for prepping or for, yes, for prepping. Um you don't wanna make multiple items or different batches because that can create cross contamination. Um if something is, if one of the items is contaminated, you can contaminate the entire batch. Instead of just, you know, prepping one item. Um in the sink, cleaning, sanitizing the sink and then prepping the next item. So it'll reduce the um likelihood of cross contamination. So when storing fresh cut produce, you wanna refrigerate and hold sliced melons, cut tomatoes and cut leafy greens. At forty-one degrees Fahrenheit or lower. And if your operation serves high-risk populations, don't use raw seed sprouts in your foods. Um because that is one of those danger items. So we're gonna go over egg and egg mixtures really quickly. Um so you typically don't wanna use um. Any eggs that aren't pasteurized. Um pasteurized eggs are safer for high-risk populations. And just everyday people. Um so. The pasteurized eggs are treated to where they're heated up enough to kill any bacteria inside the eggs such as salmonella. And then it's not cooked um thoroughly. So I did a little bit of research on the pasteurized eggs and I thought that's why eggs in America are refrigerated because they're pasteurized. So you wanna keep those at that temperature um, the refrigerated temperature. Or you um wanna make sure you're cooking them properly with a proper amount of heat. And then we wanna move to ice. Quickly, we can go over that. Um so when using ice in your operation, you wanna only make ice from water that's safe to drink. And if you're using ice to cool food or um. So cool food while it's out, you don't wanna use that in any drinks or um any other dishes. So ice can sometimes be used in soups and things to cool them down um after cooking them. So you wouldn't wanna use it in that. You wouldn't wanna put it in someone's drink. So after the ice is used to cool an item. The ice needs to be thrown out to prevent crossing contamination. So there's some special requirements um for preparations for different foods. Um so a variance is a document issued by your regulatory authority that allows a regulatory requirement to be waived or changed. So this goes with um prepping certain foods um for your business. So if you plan to um package fresh juice on site, um it has to have a warning label. Um smoking food as a way to preserve it, but not enhancing the flavor. So if you're just smoking barbecue or something, that's fine. But if you're smoking a food to extend the shelf life of. That food, then you need um a variance for that. Um using food additives or adding components such as vinegar to preserve or alter the food. So it doesn't need time and temperature control for safety. Curing food, custom processing animals for per- for personal use. So if you go hunting and you bring an item from outside of your food preparation area into that food preparation area. And you're preparing it for yourself and you're gonna take it back out, you'll need a variance for that. Packaging food using a re- reduced oxygen packaging method. So that's like um sous vide or um vacuum sealed foods. Sprouting seeds or beans and offering live shellfish from a display tank. So that would be like um the lobsters you see at Red Lobster in that um display tank. They need a variance for that. So when cooking food, um you wanna make sure that the food is at the correct internal temperature. Um so the temperatures vary from different food, from food to food. So poultry, red meat, um roast fish, they all have different internal internal temperatures. Um so ways to check the temperature is you wanna pick up a therm- thermometer with a probe that is the correct size for the food. Um so if it's a very small fillet of meat or fish, you don't wanna use a very large thermometer with a large probe. Um check the temperature in the thickest part of the food and take at least two readings in different locations. So the thickest part is the part that takes the longest to heat up, obviously. So you wanna um check the temperature in that part. And two parts, um just in case, you know, you get an inaccurate reading in one part. Or one part just isn't cooked the whole way or it's cooked more than a different part. Um sometimes if you're cooking on a grill, it might have different temperatures um in different areas. So you just wanna make sure that the meat is cooked the whole way throughout. So there are cooking requirements for for specific types of foods. So poultry, including full or ground chicken, turkey or duck, should be cooked at a hundred and sixty-five degrees Fahrenheit for fifteen seconds. Um. And then this includes stuffing made with fish meat or poultry and then stuffed meat, seafood, poultry or pasta. So ground meat um such as beef, pork and other meat. Um injected meat like brine ham or uh flavor injective roast, tenorized meat, mechanically tenorized meat. Um flightless birds with flat breast bone, breast bones, that includes ostrich and emu, although they're not very um popular. You still wanna make sure we're doing that. Um ground seafood, including chops or minced seafood and shell eggs that will be held for service. Um should be all cooked at a hundred and fifty-five degrees Fahrenheit. So shell eggs that will be hot held for service, that's something like um a buffet, like you go to a breakfast buffet and they have scrambled eggs. So that's what they're talking about there. Um seafood, including fish, soft fish and crustaceans, steaks or chops of pork, beef, veal and lamb. Commercially raised game or shell eggs that will be served immediately will be, need to be cooked at a hundred and forty-five degrees Fahrenheit. For fifteen seconds. And then roast of pork, beef, veal and lamb need to be held at a hundred and forty-five degrees Fahrenheit for four minutes. Um and then there are a few different uh, there's a chart with different times and temperatures. That you can cook the, those specific foods at. Um and then when cooking fruits and vegetables, it will be hot held for service. So hot held again is that buffet style. Um. This includes fruits, vegetables, grains like rice and pasta and lagoons, um beans, refried beans, like things like that. Um will need to be held it cooked at a hundred and thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit. So whenever you are um cooking food. A TCS food to the required minimum internal temperature. Um you will need to have a disclosure and a reminder. So the disclosure is what you usually see um on a restaurant menu. And it'll say this item is served raw or undercooked or contains um or may contain raw or raw or undercooked ingredients. And then the reminder is. That that can increase your risk of foodborne illness. Um so we wanna make sure we're following all the rules um set by the local regulatory authorities and federal. So when you're um. Serving high-risk populations, you can't serve certain items. So you can't serve raw seed sprouts, um raw or undercooked eggs or unpasteurized eggs. Um. Meat or seafood. So this is over easy eggs, raw oysters, um and like rare hamburgers or medium rare hamburgers. Those are all very dangerous to people with. Um and that are high risk and then unpasteurized milk or juice. So you are able to cool and reheat food um when it is not served immediately. So the temperature requirements for cooling food um should be cooled from a hundred and thirty-five degrees. To forty-one degrees within six hours. So the food needs to be cooled from a hundred and thirty-five degrees to seventy degrees within two hours. And then following those two hours, you have four hours to cool it from the seventy degrees to forty-one degrees. And then if the food hasn't cooled, you'll have to reheat it and then try to cool it again within that time period. So some factors that affect cooling are the thickness of the food, um the size of the food and then the storage container that it's in. Um and some methods for fo- for cooling food, um or ice water baths, um a blast chiller which is. Um cold air hitting the food, an ice paddle. So an ice paddle just is a paddle filled with water that is frozen or filled with ice. You can put it and mix it in the food um that will cool it. Um and then like I mentioned earlier, putting ice or cold water into the food as an ingredient such as soup. Um. So then to store food for for further cooling, you can put it in um. You can't store it uncovered for a period of time. Um as long as there's no way for any pathogens um to get in that food and you always wanna store it. Um with ready to eat food above food that hasn't been cooked yet. So to reheat food, um. You need to heat it to an internal temperature of a hundred and sixty-five degrees Fahrenheit. Um. From two hours start to finish. Alright, so we will do the case study, the chapter review case study. So Amanda had a busy day ahead of her at the company cafeteria. Looking in the freezer, she realized that she had forgotten to thaw the chicken breasts she had planned to serve for lunch. Moving quickly, she placed the frozen chicken in a prep sink and turned on the hot water. While waiting for the chicken to thaw, she grabbed a fan, a pan of leftover clam chowder from the cooler and placed it in the steam table to heat up. When the lunch hour ended at one thirty P M, Amanda had a lot of cooked chicken breasts left over. No problem, Amanda thought. We can use the leftover chicken to make chicken salad. Amanda left the still hot chicken breasts in a pan on the prep table while she started putting other food away and cleaning up. At nine forty-five P M, when everything else was clean, Amanda put her hand over the pan of chicken breasts and decided they were cool enough to be put away. She discovered the plant with plastic wrap. She covered the plant with plastic wrap and put it in the cooler. So what did Amanda do wrong?
Um she first, I thought on here, she didn't wash her hands either between two. She used the prep sink and then she also used hot water to thaw it out. And I believe the time, I'm not really sure about the, yeah, the time she left it out too long.
Right. So, yeah, so she shouldn't have left it out at room temperature. Um she should have put it, um she should have cooled it in one of those methods that we just used. And then what should Amanda have done differently?
Um, I wasn't sure about the cooling system, the blast chiller. I don't even know what the blast chiller was, but it says that we should possibly use a blast chiller. But what is a blast chiller?
So it's a cooling method, um it's a tool that you can use to blast cool air. Over items to cool them down quicker.
So it's, it's like a, like a heating gun, just the opposite of cooling gun, like blasting.
Um I believe so. I haven't seen one or used one before.
Okay. Um. I don't know of the other things, the microwave. I thought when you do use the food like that, you have to cook it immediately. She could put it in the microwave, yeah.
So she um. She should have thawed it under um using running, running water under seventy degrees or lower. Um. And then she shouldn't move them to the cooler instead um of leaving them. On the table. Um and then she also should have reheated the clam chowder to a hundred and sixty-five degrees. Um before moving it to the same table.
Hmm.
Okay, so let's move on to chapter seven. So chapter seven is the flow of food service. So what we'll be covering in this chapter are what are the guidelines for holding hot and cold food? When and how can food be held without temperature control? How can you prevent contamination when serving food and in self-serve areas? How can you prevent contamination and time temperature abuse when serving food off-site or through vending machines?
Oh.
So when holding food um for service, it's at risk for time temperature abuse and cross contamination. So some ways to hold food so those things won't happen are by using food covers and sneeze guards. Um holding uh. TCS food at the correct internal temperatures, so hot food at a hundred and thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit and cold food at forty-one degrees Fahrenheit. Um using a thermometer to check the food's internal temperature. Checking food temperatures at least every four hours. So if it's not at the correct temperature at that four hours, um. You want to throw it out, but you can check it at every two, if every two hours. If you wanna have corrective action on that food, so either heating it up or recooling it. So hot holding equipment shouldn't be used to reheat food um unless it's designed to do that. So like in the last example, um she put the clam chowder in a hot, on a hot steamer. She should reheat the food before putting it on a hot steamer. It's not meant to do that. It's not meant to. Heat the food to the correct um holding temperature. So you can hold food without temper- temperature control. Um and you can only do this when displaying food for a short period of time, so off-site catered events. Um so we only want the food to be out at these temperatures for about four hours and max. And then when electricity is not available to power holding equipment. So. You can hold cold food without temperature control for up to six hours. Um if it's. Um at forty-one degrees or lower, we're removing it from refrigeration. Um you wanna label the food with the time you removed it from refrigeration and the time you must throw it out. Um and it has to be six hours from the time you removed it from refrigeration. Um you wanna make sure the food temperature doesn't exceed seventy degrees Fahrenheit. And you wanna self-serve or throw out food within six hours. And this is all for hot, for cold foods.
Hmm.
For hot foods, this is the food that you only wanna um hold without time cha- temperature control for up to four hours. So the food should always be held at a hundred and thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit or higher. It should be labeled um and the discard on the label should be four hours from the time you remove the food from temperature control. So this includes transportation setup, all those things if you are doing an off-site catering event. Um and then self-serve or throw out the food within that four hours. So when serving food, um there is a big threat of contamination because so many hands are. And people around the food and touching the food, preparing it to go to the customer. So some guidelines that you can implement by for your kitchen staff are bare hand, no bare hand contact with food. Um so making sure that they're using single-hand gloves when um handling ready to eat food. Or using spatulas, tongs, deli sheets or any other utensils that will eliminate bare hand. Um contamination on the food. Um using clean and sanitize utensils. So um using separate utensils for each item. And if consistently using the utensils for a long period of time, you wanna either make sure that you're changing out the utensils to use clean ones. Um every four hours or you wanna be cleaning and sanitizing that utensil that you're using every four hours. Um when using serving utensils, you wanna store them. In the food with the handle sticking out of the container. Um a lot of people are gonna be touching the handle without gloves on. Um if it's self-serve. If your staff is serving the food, we still don't want cross contamination from anything else that they may have touched. So you wanna make sure that the handle is sticking out of um the container that the food is in. Or you can place them on a clean and sanitized food contact service um instead of holding them in that container. So when using spoons or scoops or ice cream or mashed potatoes, you wanna make sure they're either under running water. Or you can store them in a container of water that is at least a hundred and thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit. So you typically don't refill take-home food containers, but you can. Um if they're designed to be reused, um if they're provided to you, to the guests by you or your business. Um or if they're clean and sanitized correctly. Um. And then. They also must be um cleaned with fresh uh hot water under pressure. Um or be refilled by staff in operation or by the guests. Um. Navigating cross contamination. So when your service staff is serving food, um you wanna be sure it's a whole dishes by the bottom or the edge of the dish. Um holding glasses by the middle or bottom or the stem. And not touching the food contact areas of dishes or glassware. So you don't wanna touch the middle of the plate. You don't wanna touch the rim of the glass. Um the prongs on a fork, um the cutting part on the knife or just like the spoon head itself. Um you wanna carry glasses in a rack on a tray to avoid touching the surfaces. Um and not to stack glasses when carrying them. So typically you'll touch the outside of a glass with your hand. And then put another glass in there and that surface can get, you know, the bacteria or something on it.
Hmm, I see it all the time.
Hmm. So you wanna hold flatware by the handle. Um like I mentioned before, don't uh you don't wanna hold whole flat wire, flatware by food contact services. And then store the flatware so servers can grasp handles and not the food contact surfaces. So you wanna store the utensils with the utensils facing downwards. So the handles are upwards so they can grab the handle rather than grabbing um the food contact surface.
Hmm.
Um avoid bare hand contact with food that's ready to eat. So the example they gave here in the book is using um tongs to touch a bagel rather than your bare hands. Um and then using ice scoops or tongs to get ice. Um you don't wanna touch it with your hands. And then if you are going to use glass, the glass can potentially chip um or just flat out break. I've seen glasses break in ice and then you can't use the ice anymore and you have to pour um. Like red dye in there or graniting to show that ice is no longer good for use. Um because those glass pieces are very dangerous. Um so that all has to be thrown away and cleaned out um and that can take a really long time. So when reserving food, you don't typically wanna reserve food at all unless it is prepackaged food or condiments. So condiments like ketchup, mustard, um, A1 sauce, things like that, that are in packages can be reserved to guests for them to use. Um, prepackaged items such as crackers, um, maybe some croutons, those can be reserved. Um, but you don't wanna reserve food, um, from the menu item. So that's food reset, returned by the guest. Um, you don't wanna give that to somebody else. Um, condiments that aren't in their original packaging. Um, like mayonnaise, butter, uh, different things like that, um, uncovered condiments. Salad dressing that's maybe in rancin' or something, you don't wanna reserve that to someone else. Um, or combine any leftover con- condiments with fresh ones. Um, so you want to throw away all the portions of con- condiments or partially used portions of the condiments. Even condiments that have gone to a ta- to a customer or a table and they haven't used it, you still wanna throw it out because there is a likelihood that a pathogen has gotten in that condiment before it's bought back to the kitchen. So you don't wanna, um, reserve any bread or rolls, even like chips at, um, at a Mexican restaurant or, um, vegetables that may not have been eaten at maybe a wing restaurant, something like that. So that all needs to be thrown out, um, and then garnishes. So fruit, pickles, things like that, that all needs to be thrown out as well. So self-service areas can also be contaminated very easily. So to prevent this, um, you should use sneeze guards to protect it or placing in display, display cases or by packaging the food, um, for easy access to customers. Um, labeling the food in the cert- self-service areas, um, with, um, ladle handles or on ladle handles, um, or having signs. Keeping hot food hot at a hundred and thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit and cold food cold at forty-one degrees Fahrenheit. Um, and then not offering raw or ready-to-eat foods, um, with self-service, um, as a self-service item. So some raw foods can be like sushi or raw shellfish, um, such as oysters on the hash show. Um, or then ready-to-cook foods. So a lot of, um, Mongolian places or, um, even Korean barbecue sometimes will do that where you can cook it yourself. Or, um, they'll cook it for you after you pick what you want to eat. So if the food will be cooked, then you can offer it raw. But if it won't be, then you cannot. Um, not letting your guests refill dirty plates or using the dirty utensils at self-service areas. So a lot of times, like even restaurants like Golden Crowd, we see this. People will finish their plate and then will go back up and put something on there. So typically you'll have staff that is monitoring, monitoring that, um, asking guests to please, you know, put your plate in the, put your dirty plate in the bin and get a new one, um, and that uh, mitigates cross-contamination. Um, using the correct utensils for, um, dispensing food like tongs, ladles, deli sheets, things like that. So people aren't touching the food with their bare hands. Um, and then, like I mentioned before, ice to keep food or beverages cold should not be used as an ingredient. So for off-site service, um, you wanna have, um, different things that, uh, sorry. You wanna have different things that, um, will decrease the risk that food will be exposed to contamination or time temperature abuse. So you wanna pack food in insulated food containers, um, they're designed so food can't mix, leak, or spill. Um, and then at the service site, you wanna use, um, appropriate containers or equipment to hold foods at the correct temperatures. So a lot of the times, um, they will put containers in the, the other container with hot water and then like the, um, the flames underneath it. So that will keep the food warm, or they'll put it over ice. So it'll keep the food cold. Um, labeling food with a use-by-date time and reheating and s- surveys, instructions for staff on, at the off-site location. So like we said before, if it's a cold food, you can only, you only wanna leave it out for six hours. It's a hot food, you only wanna leave it out for four hours. So making sure that the staff that is serving that food knows when those times are. Um, so you wanna label that food so it's not served past that time. Um, clean inside delivery vehicles regularly, um, that's how pathogens getting food, um, old food that may have spilled, dirt that may have gotten to the vehicle, um, droppings from animals, things like that. You wanna make sure that the, um, vehicles clean, even sanitized. Um, and then checking internal food temperatures is to make their time and temperature controlled. Um, you wanna make sure the service site has the correct utilities. So you wanna make sure they have, um, safe water for cooking, dishwashing, and handwashing. Um, and having garbage containers stored away for food prep, food storage, and serving areas. And then I know we talked about this in the first couple of chapters, but having the raw foods stored away from the ready-to-eat foods is important as well because the raw foods contain, um, pathogens since they haven't been cooked already. So you don't wanna mix those foods at all. So when handling, um, food that has been prepared in a package for vending machines, um, there are some things that could mitigate risk, um, when using those vending machines, um, for ti- time te- temperature abuse um, during transport, delivery, and service. Um, so you wanna check the product shelf life daily. So they'll have an expiration or use-by-date. You wanna make sure that you're checking all the products so someone doesn't get an expired product, potentially eat it and get sick. Um, so anything that is expired or is closer to use-by-date, you don't think it will be used, you wanna throw that out. Um, so it needs to be sold within seven days of preparation. So keeping TCS food at the correct temperature, so it should be held at forty-one degrees Fahrenheit or lower and at a hundred and thirty-five Fahrenheit degrees Fahrenheit or higher. Typically, you see, um, vending machines with refrigeration more than, um, with heat. So the food ha- the vending machine has to have controls that will not dispense, um, the TCS food if the temperature is in a danger zone for a specified amount of time. Um, dispensing the TCS food in its original container and washing and wrapping fresh food, fruit with edible peels or, um, wrapping before putting it in the machine. You don't wanna put anything, um, just in the machine, just as it is. You wanna have a container on the outside of the machine. So we're gonna review the case study for chapter seven. Jill, a line cook on the morning shift at Memorial Hospital, was also filling in for the kitchen manager who usually supervises lunch in the cafeteria. Jill is also responsible for making sure meals were traded and put into food carts for transport to the patients' rooms. The staff also pass, packed two dozen meals each day for a neighborhood group that delivered them to homebound early, early elderly, sorry, elderly people. Knowing the different, delivery driver would arrive soon to pick up the meals, Jill looked for insulated food containers to hold them. When she could not find any, she loaded the meals into cardboard boxes she found near the back door. The cafeteria was busy and the staff had many meals to trade and deliver. As the lunch period was ending, Jill breathed a sigh of relief. She moved down the cafeteria's serving line, checking food temperatures. One of the casseroles was at a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty degrees Fahrenheit. Jill checked the water level in the steam table and turned up the sta- the thermostat. She then went to clean up the kitchen and finish her shift. What did Jill do wrong?
Um, the temperature for the casserole, it said it was at a hundred and thirty. Um, the casserole, that was the wrong temperature. It should have been checked, I believe, for her to know the real, the temperature. It was, uh, it was cold though. What, it was a cold. It should have been a hundred and thirty-five degrees above. Okay, so it was one thirty. So we know the temperature. But she was traveling with it, so she could have been using some kind of, um, I think it was on this page. Eleven, the heating. Some kind of heating device. You put it inside the packing, the heating packings to keep it, um, warm or, or hot.
Right, she could have done that.
Yeah, um, I don't know what else she did wrong as far as the first part.
So she didn't check the temperatures, um, the internal temperature of the food on the table. Um, and she just turned up the, um, steam table when she realized it was too cold. And then she packed the deliveries in cardboard boxes instead of making sure that they were ins- in insulated containers.
Okay, yeah, so the steamer is not to keep it. I mean, no, keep, the steamer is to keep it, it's not to heat it. You have to reheat it and then once you reheat it, it just keeps it. The steamer does. Okay, I'm getting it cuz I'm like, but the steamer is hot. Okay. You should be able to keep it, but it won't keep it to the temperature.
Right.
Cuz I had a question on like, why can't you use it? It's not that you can't. I get it. That was my question mark.
Got you. So we got the answer to that one. And then what should Jill have done?
Well, she should have reheated it, um, so that it could come to the temperature. And, or I'm not sure if she should have thrown it out if she reheated. But if it stayed out too long, she would have to throw it out. Yeah, she would have to throw it out.
So she, um, she should have collect, kept the delivery meals in a hot holding container instead of the cardboard boxes. Um, and then since she didn't know how long the casserole and the other food wasn't at that temperature because she didn't, um, record the temperature every four hours, she should have just thrown it away.
Wow. The food industry is a very um, sensitive to profit.
It's pretty particular. So now we're gonna move on to chapter eight, food safety management systems. So the study questions for this chapter are what are food safety management systems? What is active managerial control and how can it be applied? And what is hazard analysis control, critical cont- control point system? So a food safety management system is a group of practices and procedures intended to prevent foodborne illness by actively controlling risks and hazards throughout the flow of food. So in the diagram below, um, it gets some examples of that. So having a personal hygiene program, a food safety training program, supplier selection and specification program. So that's, um, acquiring a reputable supplier, um, quality control and assurance programs, cleaning sanitation programs, standard operating procedures, facility design, equipment maintenance programs, and pest control programs. Those are all ways, um, that you can have a food safety manag- Those are all, um, food safety management systems that you can implement, um, to prevent foodborne illnesses in your business. So the common risk factors for foodborne illness, um, are purchasing food from unsafe sources, failing to cook the food correctly, um, holding food at incorrect temperatures, using contaminated equipment, or practicing poor personal hygiene. Um, so as a manager, it's your responsibility to actively control these, um, risks and other factors for foodborne illness um, by using active managerial control. Um, so you wanna make sure this is proactive rather than reactive, um, by planning for these risks rather than taking action whenever, you know, this risk has occurred. Because by that time, people have probably already gotten sick. Um, and you will need to shut the operation down. So when implementing an active ma- managerial control in your operation, you wanna identify the risks. So this is finding, um, documenting the potential foodborne illness risk in your operation and then identifying the hazards that can be controlled or eliminated to prevent that risk. Um, monitoring, so making note of where employees must monitor food safety requirements within the operation. Taking corrective action, um, to correct improper procedures or behaviors. Um, having management oversight, so verifying that all policies, procedures, and corrective actions are followed and training. Um, ensuring all employees are training to follow procedures and retain and retrain when necessary. Um, so if people aren't following the correct, um, handwashing procedures, um, they're leaving their aprons on when going to the restroom, they're not following procedures when it comes to reheating food or cooling food at the correct temperatures, you're gonna wanna retrain them. Cuz they just really might not know. Um, and reevaluation, periodically assessing, assessing the system to make sure that it's working correctly and effectively. So there's some, um, recommendations for controlling common risk factors from foodborne illness, um, by the FDA. Um, and they're known as public health, health interventions. Um, so you wanna have a demonstration of knowledge as a manager, knowing that you, showing that you know what to do to keep the food safe. Um, putting it in place in procedures that, um, make sure that pa- staff are practicing personal hygiene. Um, controlling hands as a vehicle of contamination. So in the first couple of chapter, we talked a lot about how, um, hands are one of the main ways the pathogens get in food um, from people touching their hair, their body, their face, their mouth, um, using the restroom, not washing their hands or touching, um, raw items and you, by, um, introducing pathogens to food by cross-contamination. So you wanna make sure that, um, you're preventing bare, uh, hand contact with ready-to-eat foods. Um, having time and temperature parameters for controlling pathogens. So making sure that the food doesn't spend a lot of time in that time temperature, um, danger zone. And then having consumer advisories. So, um, providing customers with notices if you serve raw or undercooked meats or seafoods. So HACCP is a Hazard Analysis Critical Control Point. Um, so this identifies si- significant biological, chemical, or physical hazards um, at specific points within a product's flow. Um, and then being able to prevent, eliminate, or reduce those hazards to safe levels after they're identified. So it must be based on a written plan, um, specific to your facility's menu, customers, equipment, processes, and operations. So every operation doesn't have the same customer base. You don't have the same equipment, um, you don't have the same menu items. So you wanna make sure that your plan, um, or your program is tailored to the needs of your food operation. So we will go over the case studies, a very short chapter.
I thought I did them all, but I must have misjudged. I actually did six, seven. Think I did. I may did the last one we did before and not realizing I was doing the last chapter from last week.
That's okay. Well, this one's pretty short, so we got the information down. Um, and you can still go back and look at the study questions and the answers.
Got me in trouble. I went back.
So Carolyn, a new manager for Bobo's Bistro, felt a lot of pressure from her district manager to do well. Carolyn thought she could save money by purchasing produce from her friend who has a large garden in his yard. This would save a couple hundred dollars per month. She placed an order for her delivery the next day. Next, she walked around the restaurant to make sure everything was going to be ready for the dinner rush. She noticed the cook took the temperature of salmon as it came out of the oven. It read a hundred and twenty-five degrees Fahrenheit. Carolyn then checked the soups that were in the hot holding wells. She took the temperature of the lobster bisque, which she did every two hours, and it read a hundred and five degrees Fahrenheit. She has to leave cooked tongue to reheat the soup. Carolyn walked past Eddie who was prepping ground beef for burgers. She noticed he did not have a hat on. His apron looked very dirty. She asked Eddie to put on a clean apron. Carolyn was finally finished making her rounds and started back to her office when she saw Eddie switch from prepping burgers to making Caesar salads. He was using the same cutting board and knife to prep the lettuce. She told Eddie to wash, rinse, and sanitize the cutting board and toss any lettuce that he had already cut. She thought it would probably be best to conduct a quick training session on cross-contamination for all staff. What did Carolyn do correctly?
Well, she did decide to. She walked around first though. She did. She went around and she checked on everything and she noticed. And she noticed some things, but the best thing she did was to walk around. And she did get rid of the contaminated, was what she thought would be contaminated. So that's what she did, uh right, um she did check every two hours, that was a good thing. Instead of waiting till the four hours where she wouldn't be able to reheat anything, she's losing time. Um, where she can make that corrective action before it gets to the six, four hours it is. For the cold and six for the hot, yeah. So those were the things that I identified she did well.
So um she also asked the prep cook to put on a clean apron since his was.
Yep, sanitize and rinse the cutting board too.
Right.
So they did a lot.
So what did Carolyn do incorrectly?
Um, I think that the soup, it was one twenty-five. She said she checked the soup in the holding, it should be more. That was incorrect.
Her corrective action was right because she asked the chef to reheat the soup.
Oh, okay, so when she found it, then she went back in and. Um. I don't know what she did incorrectly.
So she purchased from a friend instead of a reputable supplier, um, the. The salmon wasn't at um, the right temperature. Um, she should have asked him to cook it a little bit longer. And then she should have told the prep cook to put a hair restraint on as well, since he didn't have on a hat.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, she bought it from somebody.
All right, so that wraps up our study session for today. Um, next week on Monday, before the um training on Tuesday. We'll have um our last study session, which will be on chapter nine and ten. Um, same time, same day, six to seven P M. And then the training will be from twelve to five um on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday, that's the twenty-third. Okay. Don't know why I thought it was Wednesday and Thursday, but, okay. Twenty-second and twenty-third.
The twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
So that's Tuesday and Wednesday.
That's Tuesday and Wednesday, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna be doing a study session there, I get it, without you is meaning, alright.
Session still on Monday, the twenty-second. Um, to cover the last two chapters in the book. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, that will be the training certification.
Okay. Right. And so something else I noticed, was there the workshops for the farmer's market still on Thursday?
So the last couple have been changed, um, the last one was on a Tuesday, and then this upcoming one is tomorrow on Tuesday as well. Um, it is at the Jefferson County Extension Office, but there's also a link for Zoom.
Right, um whatever for the social one-on-one, was the social.